Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you all to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education for the school district in North Farnland. I'd like to call the meeting order with a roll call vote, please, by our deputy clerk.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. And I appreciate everybody's patience as I'm doing my clerk duty tonight. Chisholm?
Yes.
Kildobski?
Hock?
Here.
Streeter?
Here.
Will. We have three here.
Three out of five, so we do have a board. Thank you. Report on public notice, please.
Public notices and agendas were filed, were mailed to the Farnland reporter, radio station KFIZ, KFIZ 107.1, WFDL radio, and agendas were posted in the district office US Bank Municipal Building on Friday, February 23rd, in the year of 2018.
Sir, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The minutes were distributed as part of the members' package. Any of the members have any questions or additions, corrections to the minutes?
None.
Seeing none, then they will scan approved as distributed. You have the treasury report handy?
It's right here.
Cash on hand, January 22nd, 2018, $197,128. Receipts for 123, 18 through 226, 18, $3,409,862.59. Transfers from investment accounts, $600,000. Total receipts, $4,206,999.99. Expenditures, 123 through 226, 2018, $1,802,362.42. Transfers of an investment account, $2,000. Expenditures, $3,802,362.42. Cash balance on hand, February 26th, 2018, $404,630.57. Transactions. Bills are recommended for payment as shown on the attached list dated February 26th, 2018, amount of $1,531,401.99. Bills be approved at the February board meeting, pre-approved checks, $1,067,258.77. Board meeting checks, $1,64,142.22. Total bills be approved, $1,531,401.99.
All right, thank you, Mr. Streeter. The pre-approved checks were just, were thought was distributed in the members' package. Do either of you have any questions about expenses that were posted? All right. Seeing none, what's the board's pleasure on the regulations for $1,531,401.99?
I'll make the motion to approve this.
A second. Motion and second. Any other questions? Roll call vote, please.
Hock?
Yes.
Streeter?
Yes.
Chisholm?
Yes.
Thank you. And, uh, carries. Clerk's report, correspondence and donations?
Um, we don't have any thank yous or anything that are tangible right now, although a lot of people have said nice things. And donations, nothing specific that we have entered into our donations log at this time, but pretty excited we're gonna be, I think there's close to 27 to $30,000 for that incubator EDU. That, uh, things are gonna be rocking and rolling and that room's gonna be changing over spring break, so, um, other than that, nothing too formal.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda, item H, student council report.
Okay, so I'm Gabby Thel, and I'm the student hold-up historian in my class present, and-
Hi, Gabby.
I'm Susan. The Horace Mann Student Council has had a pretty busy January planning for our big February and March events. The week of February 12th marked the start of our winter spirit Olympics, and students participated in Ojama Day, Monochromatic Day, Hawaiian Day, Pinkout Day, and Oriole Pride Day. We sold carnations for Valentine's Day, and the proceeds went to the Student Council Family Night event, which we had in March. Coach Keel came up with the idea for Crazy Coaches Hair Day, so we raised money to donate to breast cancer awareness, and the coach who raised the most money dyed their hair pink for the debt that day. So Coach Mothe and Coach Chavez were all the winners, and they both had pink hair. The Orioles Nest sold pinkout shirts with a portion of the proceeds going to breast cancer awareness. At the February 15th Boys and Girls Game, Student Council was able to raise over $300 in two minutes with our 60-second dash for cash. A dash for cash was held at each game, and all the proceeds from these, as well as the 50-50 wrapping from that night, would be donated to breast cancer awareness. With all the events held, we will be donating just over $500, so that night was pretty successful for us. On Saturday, March 17th, the annual winter ball was held. It was a lot of fun, and we had about 250 students attend. Next up for the Horace Mann Student Council is our annual family night, which will be held on Wednesday, March 14th. And then this is other high school clubs and events. Valentine's Day donuts were sold by NHS students to raise money to donate to Feed My Starving Children. The next Feed My Starving Children Blue Cap volunteer event will be held in April. It will be open to NHS, Key Pub, and Student Council members, and we hope to be taking 70 volunteers that day. NHS will be participating in the Bunny Buddies event with some of the classrooms at ELC in March. Invitations for the new NHS candidates have been handed out and will be evaluated starting March 16th. And this is what Bessie Allen Oriole leaders have going on. The seventh grade Oriole leaders have joined us, and as a group, we made valentines for the residents of Touchstone. The second dance of the year was held Friday, February 16th, with our Oriole leaders responsible for all aspects, including advertising, decorating, DJ, ticket-taking, and concessions and cleanup. They did a great job. The eighth graders continue to work through the seven habits. Our last two habits were begin with the end in mind, which is like goal-setting, put first things first, which is prioritizing. Next on their list is to select and start our community service projects. Last year, they made baby boxes for new beginnings, and that's all.
It's pretty informative, man.
It's very informative.
Nice to see you. So Gabrielle, you're a sophomore at Horace Mann High School, new to the story?
Yep.
Excellent. Well, it's great to have you here. Does anybody have any specific questions for Gabby as she's here, and put her on the spot a little bit?
Yes, I do. What is monochromatic day, and what did people wear to be monochromatic?
So, monochromatic day, everyone had to wear one color. So I wore all blue. I wore like blue jeans and a blue shirt and a jean jacket, and so everyone wore, you know, just one color all day, so then their shoes would match, and it's like blue shoes on and stuff, and we had a lot of people participate in that.
Other than blue and black, what were some of the monochromatic colors that people managed to pull off?
Um, I think I saw red, that one was a little crazy, and then a lot of grays, and there was a white. I think, I think I did see an orange, but it was pretty much like grays and whites and blacks were what people were with.
Very good, thank you. Anyone else? All right, thank you for your report. 7:17 is time for the citizens' input. This is an opportunity for anyone who is in the audience to address the board on any matters that they would like the board to hear. So, does anyone present wish to address the board? Crickets. I'm here for crickets. Anyone? Anyone at all? All right, hearing none, I'll declare the citizens' input portion of the meeting closed at 7:18. Next on the agenda is the super agenda's report. Anyways, switch hats.
All right, well, thank you very much. President Chisholm, we have, um, two things, mostly just one, and that's gonna be hearing from Dave McCoo from Shank, he was gonna be here in February, but lo and behold, the weather kept things off. You have, Dave is gonna do, you know, a five, 10-minute overview of what's going on. What he did also bring is you have some really great resources, so as Dave goes through the information that he, that about our audit and for the rest of the audience, Dave McCoo is the head, one of the leaders at Shank, and they've been doing our audit since early 2000s. So this is just an opportunity for Dave to talk a little bit about our financial viability and how the audit came through and kind of where we're sitting. So at that time, we'll invite Dave up. We have another financial man present, too, Mike Clark, who brings good news of bonding, but that's really our-
Okay. He should have two documents. I'm gonna go through the annual financial report briefly and then touch a little bit on the, how the results of the audit and the management communications. So the bottom document really represents the financial position, results of operations of the district for the year ended June 30th. And so there's a number of statements, documents that go through, couple of highlights, starting on page one, our independent audit report. That's where they are. Report to the district and the district board, it goes through the financial statements that are contained in here. It talks about these records, or these financial statements that are derived directly from the financial records of the district. So we're using what you get throughout the year, and as part of our audit, we're sampling and looking at those transactions. Our responsibility is to get opinions on that data, and on the bottom of page one, we have expressed an opinion, and our opinion is unmodified. It means that we would make no modifications to the reporting of the funding. So it is a complete representation, in our opinion, of the financial results and operations of the district for the year then ended. Starting now, pages four through 10, is what we call management's discussion analysis, and it's a narrative format that kind of hits on some of the highlights of what happened in 2017 with a comparison to the prior year, so I'd encourage you to read it. It is required to contain very specific disclosures, and it does contain all those disclosures about what happened in 2017. Then we turn to page 11 and 12. I'm just gonna briefly touch on the governmental financial statements, because they really represent the district as if you were a private business. What that means is all the assets, including the building we're in, and all related long-term liabilities are reported on this financial statement. So you can see your total assets are about 17.9 million, very consistent with the prior year, at about 17.5. The date breakout, a lot of those assets are really embedded in the buildings that we're in and the assets that we're in, but you did have a nice increase in cash and investments, basically indicating a good year, and then some additional funds restricted for debt services. When we get into management communications, we'll talk about that a little bit. Then there are a couple disclosures, because, and then briefly, there was a new standard related to OPET, so the district didn't comply with that standard, and the disclosure contained within this document. Liabilities came down by about $1 million, and you can see that primarily in the long-term liabilities, as you paid down all their debt using resources of the district. Key thing is, when you look at the bottom of page, your net position did grow from about 13.8 million to 14.3. So you'll see that when we get into the management communications of the different fund balances that your district is reporting, but you had a very good budget year going forward. Then we turn to page 12. Page 12 kind of goes through the change in that position, and you can see you did have an increase in net position. Why, why that's important is you're reinvesting in the facilities, you're, you know, generating an increase in, in net ownership. So by increasing your net position, a very strong position on your financial statements. The rest of the report are fund financials, and we're gonna go through that in the management communications, unless anyone has any questions on- Near the back of the report, I just want to point out, is what we call our single audit report, so while we do work on the financial statements that you receive, we also review the district's compliance with laws and regulations related to both federal and state funding. So you received approximately 1.2 million of federal dollars and about 10.3 million of state dollars. So our work, we work with people that are managing those grants, whether it be food programs, or Title I, or special education, we do rotate the grants. We're pleased to indicate that our results of our test line compliance did not disclose any type of compliance that would have to be resolved by the district. So very clean opinion on your compliance, and it indicates that the district has very good controls over the federal, state, and state assistance you produce. Any questions on the annual report? Very positive from a control perspective. The second document is, it kind of goes through the management communications, and here we bring out and give you two-year comparisons on your fund balance. So the first four pages really walk through how the audit went, walk through some of the estimates that are embedded in the financial statements. If you go through the first five pages, you'll notice that the audit went very well. We worked with a lot of people here at the district, and everyone did cooperate very well in completing this audit. It does take a fair amount of staff time to prepare for us to come in, whether it be the grant side, or, you know, Ray and the business office, and from our perspective, the audit went very, very well. So it's an indication of the staff you have here at the district. We did have one item that we report as a control deficiency, only meant is that when we prepare the statements, we have to inform the board of that. So we currently do about 70 school districts, eventually, it's probably about 68 of them that have that. It's just very difficult to prepare the end of the board, so we just have to communicate that to the board. So it doesn't mean you have controls, it just means that we're preparing your financial statements. Then we turn to page six. Page six is important, because page six is kind of your fund balance. So oftentimes, we focus on fund balance, because it's a measure of your liquidity, it is a measure of your financial stability as you go forward. Your most significant fund is your general fund. It's your general operating fund, and you can see last year, you had about 3.3 million at the end of 2016. This year, you dropped about 21 million, or 21,000 in fund balance, but, you know, really it indicates that the budget, actual activities were very close to your budget as you move forward. So a very strong year in your general fund. 3.2 million, as we talked about, is a very strong fund balance, and it puts you in a solid financial position. The results of the other funds are listed. The only significant other change is really the debt service fund. You can see your debt service fund balance, they go up, and that is in anticipation of the program or the projects that you're having, and increase the funding to start funding some of the debt service that will come as a result. Overall, there are no concerns within any of your fund positions, and we think the district, as we indicate on the next page, is in very strong financial position, as you can see here in, right here. Now page eight, we just have one common observation about new items. So there's always new items that relate to new pronouncements. I just talked about one new pronouncement that was implemented by the district this year. There's a couple new ones that will have some impact on the district going forward, so you'll see additional disclosures related to that. Overall, very, very strong audit, and we certainly appreciate working with this community. Any questions for the board?
So Dave, could you just comparative, I mean, you said you work with some of the other districts. Financially and how we go about doing our business, would, how would you say, because I think a lot of times, the board, we don't know what we don't know. So if you would just make a comment on how we do comparative to what we should be doing and the norm, and how that's working?
From a standpoint, when I look at the financial operations, you know, I think from a control perspective, the district does very well, so we're always looking at control, but then when I look at a financial perspective, there's a lot of school districts that have short-term borrow during the year, because the fund balance isn't sufficient to carry in the operating cash. So when we talk about, you know, your fund balance, your fund balance is in a very strong position, and that's important to allow you to not short-term borrow, because some of your revenue flows, you start, you get halfway through the year before you start collecting taxes, so you need a strong fund balance to get you through those periods. So from a standpoint, when I look at your fund balance here, you know, in the strong part of our districts, you know, most will have to short-term borrow, at least some portion of it, so it's still very strong.
Reed, do you have any other comments that you wanna add to Dave?
My job. It's always a pleasure working with the Shank team. We've been able to keep one key, Jerry, as we come back year after year now, so it's nice to have that consistency.
And one thing that we see whenever we have Shank here, is audits, we see, as much as it's a lot of work, and people might not see audits as, oh, joy, it's a really great, it's a really great time for us to get feedback. And anytime that, there's things where, I mean, we're doing, we're doing better, you know, like how we back up our data, how we make sure that we have controls over spending, so we always want to do cross-checking, and Shank gives us a lot of ideas, not only financially, but how we can ethically make things so they're more transparent and better and full better. So I want to thank Maria, Bonnie, Karen, Darcy, all the people that have put together, all the secretaries that do a lot of things, so, but Maria and her team do an excellent job, we're blessed to have her. And I want to also thank you, Dave, for coming up and your team, we love having you guys here.
Thank you very much. Thanks, thank you.
All right, so next, we had, we got, so a person who just came in, Mike Clark, he's got some good news that they could see until eight, well, that's cool. But we just went to our second bond issue today, turned out pretty well. So what we're gonna do right now, the board met with C.D. Smith, Greg, Savo, and Dave Mertens, the board representatives, and we went through, we looked at awarding, and we're gonna go through the list of contractors that will be awarded, or awarded things for the Friendship project, which is already starting to rock and roll. I've just given you a really quick update on some of the things of Horace Mann and Bessie Allen, those projects, right now, we don't know total cost, we know we have between 2.5 and 2.9 million dollars that we can utilize on these projects. We know that 300,000's already been invested in the technology education area, $11,000 in the sound system up at Horace Mann High School, and then we have HVAC, we have outdoor things, we have expanded space at the high school, secure entrances at both Bessie Allen and Horace Mann, and some other rejuvenating. So today is just to give you kind of an overview of what those projects at Horace Mann and Bessie Allen look like. Friendship's already rocking and rolling, as you would say, the horse is out of the barn on that, we're pretty much set and rocking there, and that's gonna be coming soon. Look for some all-district mailing coming up, probably March. We will at the beginning of March, remember, our March board meeting is the third Monday of March because of spring break, so the 21st, I believe. And at that time, we'll have a facilities committee beforehand, so we'll go over information. Hey, Melissa? So we'll go over information. So we'll go over information about where we're at, and then this project, too. So this right here is just a rendering. We're at the village today, Dave, myself, and Ray, along with our engineer, exterior engineer, Rettler. So if you see, this is kind of the conceptual thing, we're gonna go, this, we're getting, this is what the idea is of what we can do outside. As you can see, this will be the new Bessie Allen entrance here. One of the big things for safety, you want to separate traffic patterns. You can see the idea here is to have the buses come here, this can hold, we have about five buses, or four buses, four and a half buses. Buses will drop off here, and then the kids walk to Bessie Allen and Horace Mann. This will become parent drop-off, if you kind of picture Milwaukee Airport, where parents will be able to park right here, and then there'll be that fire lane, so parents will not enter here until they come around and then drive through here. This will be a two-way road right here, and then students will come in here and park. This area, we're adding another, I think it's four, 34 parking spots here. Then, as you can see up here, we're resurfacing the tennis courts. Had some ideas, maybe looking at basketball instead of tennis, too. Who knows? But we have six pickleball courts also, and all new fencing around that area. We don't know, this is a little pavilion, but this will be for community, also for Fayette, talked with the middle school and high school staff. And then back here, you can see we're gonna be adding, I think it's 10 spots or 11 spots, and then also a few spots here. So the idea is to expand parking here for the Horace Mann staff. Here, there's probably about 20 more spots, and this will be for Bessie Allen and also visitor parking. And that way, the traffic flow currently, right now, students get dropped off here for Bessie Allen, all that'll be able to happen right up here. So this is a conceptual thing, and all the surfaces will, so this will all be re-blacktop and relined, too. So let's, yep? Okay, now this right here, so this is a picture from the, from satellite. All this does is there's shadows, so this delineates where the edge of the building is, so, yeah. It's no, just so that they can delineate for measurement's sakes. So this would, this, this part right here, over here, is actually gonna be eliminated, 'cause then we'll have the buses separate from the parents. The kids, so that's kind of what that, is there any questions, been working through that? See how that all flows through? And then, this right here, this is a Horace Mann, and I'll blow it up a little bit, the concept, right, right now, 25 percent, we have no idea what this is gonna cost, so it doesn't mean we'll get it all done, but this is the second floor, and I'll show you some pictures of a second level, right here. We're seeing that we, right now, are packed in the cafeteria. We're also looking at if we do take some room for a secure entrance, along with the school store, along with if we expand our survey area, it's gonna take away from space. And then on the second floor, also, we don't really have any breakout large group instruction areas for, for learning. That can not only be a cafeteria, but also a large group kind of instruction area, talk about that. Here, you'll see that we're gonna go into secured entrance, so when somebody comes in the building, they have to go into the office before they go into the school, along with taking part of the library. This will be the counselor's suite, and remapping this area to best serve students and the administration, SRO, counselors, dean, student staff there. And then, as we go down here, tech, and I'll go to the next thing. Okay, and so this is a blown up area, a little bit more, if you will. So you can see the secured entrance is actually gonna be into the Horace Mann High School. This will be the new Oriole's Nest, all glass, right where you come in, this is that main entrance here. And then you can see where you have, come in here, this, there's also gonna be a pass-through window, so parents don't necessarily have to come into the office, they can just pass through things. This is gonna be replicated for the Bessie Allen. Then you can see it's a better use of space here. We have SRO that enters from the outside, and then we have our naughty kid area here, not naughty, but needing for some more supports, right in that area, the dean and Samantha conference room, we have our nurses area here, coming into this area, which we have two, two areas for our counselors, and then also, this is going to be a counselor's, or the conference room, and a sitting area, so it'll better serve all of our kids with a whole bunch of different needs. So this is, we're there for that, and then this is the second floor, if you will, of the cafeteria. So you can kind of see the whole idea, and I got some better images, that there could be 84 seats, but this could be, there could be couches, there could be booths, there could be a lot of things. And then it's stepped down in order to maximize light, so there's a sitting area here, here and here, and then the new staircase that would come and run along the windows there. And then you can kind of see here is where the Oriole's Nest is, right down there, right where you would come in. So that's kind of a conceptual idea, it's there. And then if we go to this, this is kind of what it would look like if you're looking at it from, the walking from, so you're coming from the library, right now, so the airplane in V-Rank is right here, hopefully we can get that hung, I don't know, whatever. But this is where you can see, you can see the step down, the new staircase, and the added area, we're still trying to keep, I know that the original building, and Steve's really helped us to understand it, to keep it airy and big, so we don't want it to look, the whole idea was to bring, this is a welcoming area. And then a couple other renderings. This is from where you would come in the athletic entrance, so you can see here, it is a little bit lower here, but this is that athletic entrance coming in, or if you're coming from the academic wing. And this is a view from if you were coming in from, right from the main entrance, so you would've been buzzed in, and then this is where the Oriole's Alters is. Well, that's that, and then if we go into Bessie Allen, we're already in the mix of doing this, and we're doing, Dave and his team are doing a lot of this work on their own, we're helping sub that out. These bathrooms, we redid, oh, boy, when I first got here, it's like 13 years ago, and I, I think we, we need, they need some more attention, but they're not the highest need, but if we do have enough resources, bathroom model there, here and here. You can see that up here, this is gonna be, we are sitting in the classroom, then there's gonna be another classroom over there, so two classrooms, there are expanded kids coming up. And then you can see that here, so in that entrance, you figure about a third of that's gonna be taken away and added to the Bessie Allen office, once again, secure entrance, where you have to come into the office before you can go into the building. And this would all be redone, and the principal's office, the counselor's office, nurses room are right there, bathroom, then redoing the basketball, the floor, brand-new floor that has one hoop, and then some mini, three mini courts for more hoops, and then these are just lines that are put in for the workout thing, or dots and ladders. This whole basketball thing is moved over, what, or like six, four feet? Just so there's more space between the bleachers there, so. And that's, and then over here, this is the current Bessie Allen office, remember, the district office is moving over to FLC, to where FLC- Remember, the district office is moving over to FLC, to where FLC got us now, so there, bless you. So when they go, this will be Bessie Allen. And then we're Bessie Allen, that's going to be made into a classroom, a small group instruction room, some offices, another office there. Bless you. And then here, looking at adding the nest. Right now, currently, I think there's about 90 seats in there. Want to have enough for class to get up to like 115 to 120. We'll see what that is, and also replacing this door here that is very difficult to open and close. And this is just a bigger area, if you will, of the new Bessie Allen entrance. So this is where all of you came in, these doors right here. As you can see, it's going to be eaten up a little bit, but then it makes this reception area a little bit nicer. There'll be a pass-through window, but everybody would have to come in here to go out into Bessie Allen. Then here, this is storage and where packed the stuff is, principal, that your office windows from the Bessie Allen principal will get Dave manning here, let him sit in there for a little bit so he can feel what that would be like. Then we have a conference room, which is where my current office is, and then the counselors. And the nice thing about this counselor suite is there's entrance for the kids to go in here, instead of having to go through the whole office to get there. But yet, there's still work there, our office there. And then this is something we don't have down, and it's a workroom, which will be really nice for the staff on that end of the building. So those are our 25, I'd say 90% plans. And now, what's going to happen is, is they're going to go and try to figure out how we can afford it, if we can, or how we have to pare it down. The one other thing that, the bat, our locker rooms are absolutely archaic and need something. We also know it's sad, but I want to let everybody know, kids don't shower at schools anymore. I know it's not like the old days, there's no towel fees. So understanding that, what we've done is designed so the girls' locker room, all, all the girls would have lockers in the middle, and there'd be hooks, so they can hang up their clothes, or not just throw them all over the place. But then there's a toilet room here, and then a changing room. We know, like, there's a lot. We tried to make areas so it's a lot more private. Kids like to change in privacy more so than in the past. This is where the current showers are. This would be made into, there'd still be a shower here, along with the bathroom. This would be the female staff changing area for working out. We do have a male one that's over by the band room. And then you can see over here, the boys' locker room is very similar to what the girls' locker room, and then this is just some flex office space, which used to be the Fayette Office, which is now a locker room, but the shower doesn't work, so we can just eliminate that. And then you can see the floor here, and also in the gym, we're getting priced out the hoops, and also two drop-down things for baseball and softball.
Bad cages.
Bad cages. Boy, I'm sure there's some gym games you can play in there. That'd be fun, wouldn't it? Dodgeball, and then you have a jail.
They're planned out for the summer, like this.
Yeah, well, partly, mostly. What would not happen this summer, depending on prices, we're going to have prioritize it. Things come in too expensive, we're going to have, say, what we're not going to do and what we're going to do. What will not get done is the Bessie Allen office in this area. This will not get done this summer, because we still need it until we can move over there. So I would say, we would probably hopefully get everything else done except for this area. So this is going to be moving pretty quick.
It's going to be bidding, just like the Friendship.
Yep, just like the Friendship stuff. And what we're hoping is, is the Friendship bidders kind of give us, because since they'll have everything here already mobilized, it could be a great thing to save some money off, so we'll leverage that. One thing, too, just a kind of a foreshadow, we don't have a lot of interest in people teaching summer school right now. I think it's because of how it is, and I don't know how many people are going to use it. I think, Melissa, you said it really well, people have lineup daycare, who knows if they can pull it out at that time. We may vary, we're going to make a decision by March 15th if we're going to have, per se, summer school, as we've had in the past. We're going to have high school credit recovery, but that's all kind of online, it can go wherever. Getting ready for kindergarten and first grade, we can run those at ELC with the teachers that would do them anyways, so that doesn't have to be a big, big thing. Athletics and music will be going all summer long anyways, that don't need to have any certain center part. And if we do not have summer school, per se, like we used to in the past, we're still going to have lunch. We sell that free lunch, and we'll still advertise for that, so the community kids can come in for lunch. But what we would do, talking with Arts for Kids, if we don't have summer school, they might see an upswing of meeting people. We might work with them and maybe do a profit sharing, let them use more of ELC, so that we can do some summer day camps, if you will. And if some of our staffs do want to make some revenue over the summer, they might be able to work there with them, thus maybe we could claim some for FTEs for some. As far as cost go, and I bring that up because Bessie Allen will not be utilized for, ready for summer school, per se, all of it, so we're going to have some, some things there. But really, we don't make any money on summer school. Matter of fact, maybe cost neutral or a loss, would you say? Yeah. So, but we'll see. I think this could help us to kind of reshape as we go forward. So just kind of a heads up, because of the construction and to have, you know, if we go and, because August 20th is going to come really quick, we're going to have to make some decisions. Do we do that all now, or are there some things that we wait until we get done, May 24th, and then we have a longer 2019?
I like that word. High priority.
That's probably the number one priority.
What exactly are we doing with that?
Dave, feed in, otherwise, so for, we're looking, we had, our people look at HVAC. I think Frederickson came through and looked at HVAC. We're looking at adding a chiller, at least for the gym, and then also looking at replacing boilers, and looking at all of our HVAC flow and all the different, we have right currently, right now, we have many pneumatic, which are run, you know, not electrical, or based on digital thermostats, or get all the digital thermostats that can be utilized or can work better.
And that we'd have to abate a lot of asbestos, so, good numbers on all that right now.
Yep. We're looking at that could very well be a couple hundred thousand dollar price take. We're also looking at new air handlers for, in the wood metal. But once again, just like we invest, we put air conditioning in the, in the weight room, that'll help with all the equipment and everything along those. So when we look at priorities, right now, we know number one priority is we want to make sure infrastructure and the utilities are taken care of. We know we have need in the gym. We know we have need with the secure entrances. There's other things that we might be able, that we might have to dial back on in order to take care of those, but we want to hold off and find out what those initial costs look like, and then once we see those, then we can start to really prioritize them, much like we did with Friendship. Do I hope that maybe everything that we see as a need or a strong want can be afforded? Yes, but we'll have to wait. Now, also, the ELC project is not going to go out until next fall. And now, ELC, one thing that I will announce, I've talked with Arts for Kids, Arts for Kids is going to exist at ELC until June 30th, 2019. They have been told that the district will not be running the daycare after June 19th, 2000, and, or June 30th, 2019. They're aware of that, but we do want to partner with them because we think there's a high need and a high value of having a daycare in North Finalak, but that gives them over 14, 15 months in order to figure that out. So if anybody asks you, is there going to be a daycare in North Finalak, the reality of it is, yes, at least till June 30th, 2019. If Arts for Kids decides they're not the ones who want to go ahead and forge and find a building or build a building, the district will aggressively look at other partners to see if we can work with them in order to build a daycare in North Finalak that can serve the community and our wraparound services for school. We're going to hear from some ladies about a charter school, which is really exciting. We've never done a charter school in North Finalak, or tried for it, so we're with the board's consent, we're going to look at.
We did do that last year, they mentioned that.
Oh, cool.
In consortium with, we didn't do our own.
Oh, good.
Consortium with Finalak and Camp Support.
Okay. But, sorry. We're going to go for our second charter school, which is pretty exciting. So that's going to be fun. And we're going to need space. We know that the ELC building, we're, we're figuring out that. We know kids that are going to struggle. We know they're going to struggle before they get to high school or junior year. Maybe we need some more alternative learning. We also know that we have students on a varied variety of needs. For instance, there's a Wings program in Finalak where they actually have, you know, apartment, and needs like, what they can do for transitioning into life so they can live, so we're looking at building something possibly like that. Right now, we outsourced to Elmwood, to whatever it takes in Oshkosh, or not Elmwood, to Amity. So we have our students that really struggle to be in regular setting, they need more self-contained. That might grow to a number where we have to look at doing something different. Maintenance, we have a lot of growing maintenance needs, might look at moving maintenance from ELC out towards where the house is on 1100 Prospect. So we got a lot of moving parts, plus we're going to need a spot as the charter school becomes successful to see where that could be. That could be another thing that we have housing that building. So there's a lot of things out there. Also, another transition that we're doing right now is on our 4K programs. We currently have Arts for Kids that does all of our 4K. Next year, the Trafford Center in Finalak is, they need some space and would like to do a, some 4K, so we've talked to Arts for Kids. We're going to have one room that's available for the Trafford Center to run two 4K programs. So that will bring in another partner from the community, and Arts for Kids will still be running, I believe, four, or no, they'll be running two, two sections, and then we have Advocat. One for Advocat. So you're going to see another contract coming from the Trafford Center, if that's the way it's going to roll. So there's a lot of moving parts, but the ELC project, once we get these things rolling, we'll focus on that on the fall a little bit, and see kind of where things are at. So that's kind of a referendum update in a nutshell. Couple things been going on. Anybody have any questions? Kerry, Joe, as you say, it's accurate how everything's going at Friendship. We've got some chairs in, we've got some tables in.
Yeah, we've got some cool furniture that we're testing out, some whiteboard surface tables. We do have some other modular furniture, some that's nice and heavy, so it's harder to maneuver for children sometimes, in a good way. So, yeah, we're testing that out, we'll get that all set up. We're just, we finished our book fair tonight, got that unpacked, so we'll be setting up the test classroom tomorrow, so, we'll be doing that.
And we're looking at our new technology solution, where it's a one-contained 75-inch everything right there. We have one in, it's working pretty well, if the other one's even close to as well as that one works, I think we might have a solution all set for that, so, yeah.
Yeah, Dan's sort of doing a nice job getting it out and around to different classrooms to try it out and see what it looks like, so.
And then the timeline, one of the things, when we went with Bray, or with C.D. Smith, by the 20th of August, all of the new playground, well, not, the majority of the new playground will be done, and parking for staff will be done at Friendship in front. So we're going to, that's one of the big timely things that need to get done, that was part of the bidding process. So, pretty exciting.
Very exciting.
Colors all picked out. Remember, you don't go to second grade, you're going to be going to South America, finish off going to Europe in fifth grade, you don't even have to pay for a flight, it's going to be cool. We folk come in Antarctica with the narwhal and little penguins, it's going to be fun. You're going to have to go visit gale in Australia.
That's yours, the entire.
Nope, that's the We Folk. 5K's Australian. Walas and kangaroos. And just with that, too, we're going to be meeting Ms. Chris Schultz, which we'll meet in a little bit. Kerry Joe will become the principal of 5K with Debbie's retirement, so kind of that transition, because 5K will be coming over. And then Chris will be taking over all early childhood and special education. So we're kind of splitting it up to make more sense now with Debbie moving on to brighter, well, I'm sure we'll see Debbie around quite a bit still, and then, but with Chris coming in, we're going to see with the building, I think we'll see a really good, it'll make sense if it flush up. So we got, we got some moving parts, but feeling pretty good about it. All this stuff started probably about five years ago, when that gentleman there, Maria, was sitting in a room saying, we should really think about improving some things.
You took it from there.
Yeah. All right. Any questions about the referendum? Okay. But look for probably about 5:30 till 7 o'clock, meeting on the 21st of March for our facility committee, and then we're going to be doing a big mailing at the end of March. I'm also looking at hiring a photographer that will be here for the entire process to be able to document, do all that, and I know that they, that probably Bray and C.D. Smith would use that person's skills, too, so we're working through all that stuff. All right. It is, or it is National School Breakfast Week, so come on in, get some bittles for breakfast, so that's exciting. There we proclaim it. All right, that's the only proclamation I have right now. Administrative team, anything that you guys want to add? I did update when I sent you the reports, update report, I do have Mike's bands in there. Mike had a really exciting weekend, ended up selling this house in Austin, so he is 100% Finalak area guy now, which is cool. All right, good talk. Anything that you guys have? All right, moving on. All right, so let us go. So these first two items, very, very excited, and we have Meg Pines, so we don't have Tiffany here, but we have three ladies, I'll turn it over to them. There's two items, item one and item two. Item one is discuss, consider the establishment of the Trafford Way Institute. I have it that the name could change for, yes, it has changed. Charter school in the school district, North Finalak. In order to apply for this grant, the board has to approve this. What they're going to be doing then, is they, not then, they've already been working on this, is doing everything they need in order to apply for this grant, which this grant is not only to plan it, but also then to institute it over five years. So in order to be eligible for that grant, the board has to charter a charter school, if you will. And then the second one, number two, is discuss and consider support of the board for submission of proposal for the charter school grant, which will be, I believe, March 14th is the deadline, or?
March 9.
March 9. So at that, what I'll do is I'll turn it over, if you would, ladies, so Beth and Megan and Karen, if you guys could explain a little bit where we're at, what this charter school is all about, and what value would bring, and kind of answer any questions. All right, you guys got to go. Anybody need a water? Go ahead and grab a water. Here, if you guys would come over here to the cameras there.
Okay, in 2014, Beth and I started collaborating with Dr. Matt Dowd to look for some more resources for families with children with autism. This is kind of, every year, it's progressed to something a little bit more. Started collaborating with Meg Pines then, for some services in schools through above the boundaries of autism. And in the back of our head, we always had that we really felt we wanted to start a charter school, that we could do a better job preparing these kids for adults. So we've come up with, the name of our school is going to be Trafford Way School for the Exceptional Mind, is what, is what the planning team, the current.
This one might stick.
We have till March 9.
Yeah.
So we just kind of outlined here for you our mission and our vision of what it is.
So we're, you know, really going to cater to those neurodiverse students, just finding their love and passion for what they enjoy, and many of these type students are just brilliant minds that in a classroom, it's hard to tailor things to their needs. So we outlined the Trafford approach, and it's really that approach is what we're going to use for our school. And some other aspects that we're going to incorporate are using, marrying university as a partner to bring in student teachers, to really mentor those students that are interested in education. Also, you know, looking at using gifted and talented students to come in to work with our kids in different groups and kind of be that inclusion piece, so that our students are, you know, working with other kids outside of the school. Initial plans are for kindergarten through sixth grade, and then we're already looking at expansion, because the grant can be applied for there after years. So, you know, you think about a student that may be very successful up through sixth grade, and then how would you stream them back into regular education? So we're kind of looking at the long term, maybe adding on seventh through ninth, and then 10th through 12th.
Kind of what Final Act did with their, those seven staff, they started with young and then added the middle and now high schools.
So if we would apply every year for another grant, this grant would take us till the first ones that started are finishing out, we're in 12th grade.
So this, this, I'll ask some probing questions, you guys. So this would be open to anybody in the district, open enrollment, but it would be understood that these are what it's gonna be, so it's gonna be that student that would fit that model?
Yes, open to all. We're hoping for potential 40 students the first year. And open to the county, is kind of our thinking, that range. Also, really working with businesses, because these brilliant minds are gonna be engineers someday. And so to start that process very early, you know, 10-year-olds working with engineers and doing some of the same things that they would do on the job. And that's, you know, a lot of times their love and passion to do those recording things and to start that early and, you know, and I think about the Wings program, if that was a part of it, because, you know, to learn those life skills too would really work well with us.
Yeah, so that's a strength-based approach, that's really looking at individualized learning, that's gonna grow its meaningful employment down the line. So we're hoping to have programs that will span that whole case, all the way until adulthood, over time.
And we just kind of reached out into a few local businesses who are already showing interest in supporting us.
And then once that, once the grant, as we, as that grant's secured, then more information will come out of what the board's role is, the type of board that then would also serve the Trafford Way. And then also open enrollment, one of the reasons with having a 4K, the Trafford Center having a 4K, is that could very well be kind of like a feeder, if you will, into this program. So that's why when we did our open enrollment limits in January, we said 4K we might allow for open enrollees if they have an IEP. And then we would say we'd look at, wouldn't necessarily mean that they would get in for 5K, but if this program does start, we very well could have some exception. We could have, we could have our process fixed so that they could do that, but it would serve our students first. And from my understanding is, is not only would it serve maybe some students that we're not aware of, but it would alleviate some of the stress of the regular classroom. Those students that aren't being met in that area, they would no longer be in that realm, if you will, to be in a different realm, which then takes a little taxes less on the regular education warrant.
Any questions about?
Just more curiosity of all the charter school route versus an in-house program in North Final Act, because is it just the flexibility that allows a lot of the difference in charter programs?
Yeah, for a charter school, you have to waive certain things that are where, are in the school board policy. And so we're really in the process of looking at that. But a lot of it has to do with really individualizing the curriculum and waiving some of the exact.
Like seat time for certain things, or how much FIAID, or how much reading is needed? So instead of saying all specific minutes, that can, that, that can waive. And that's the charter school, if you can do it, like you said, if we, if they could do this, without going down, it wouldn't be a charter school. But it's to waive a lot of it's the minutes, the seat time, the different things that we have. Could be bossing too, in some senses, if we do have open enrollment, working with student services, or could be other things also, so.
And there'd also be more flexibility into how we can determine that these kids are meeting those standards. Right now, that they have to go through all those standards, where we can just kind of say, yes, they, they meet these standards, they might meet it a different way. They might demonstrate it through a different evaluation process.
Staffing-wise, what are you guys thinking about? Because part of the whole thing is that the district then takes on the financial responsibility for it to continue to go in for staffing, then what are you originally thinking? If it would run for 40, not that we're willing to, but how many people would it be?
It was gonna be two regular ed, one special ed, and then more OT and speech. And then some assistance as well.
And then out of part of the grant money, the consulting fee with Trafford staff can come out of the grant fund.
And then the leadership, you were talking about having a half-time teacher, half-time administrator. That definitely oversee that, so it wouldn't be any more taxing responsibility on our current administration. We haven't figured out the funding yet, but that's later. But we've talked, then we don't know.
Yeah, Maria's gonna join us on Thursday. To help us.
We used the word "need."
No, the state aid that we get, that charter school we get in the state, with the charter, right? First, first year.
But then once we do start to take counts of that fee, so, that's where, that open enrollment piece, so we don't, there's a lot of what ifs. And I think we'll dive more into that once the grant gets secured. And once the grant gets secured, and we're using Kevin DeCramer from CCA 6, and he's charging us, it's a flat fee of $9,000. Normally, there's a fee plus any percentage of, we decided to go with the one-shot fee. And once we, if we get this, then they, we can, we have the ability, it's like the PEP grant. The PEP grant you got, and you put the grant in, but then you could, you could change because things evolve, go differently, they're within what is allowed with the charter school in Austin.
Well, we have to thank you for letting, allowing Kevin to help us, he is a fan.
He's awesome.
Very familiar with charter schools, if you're on the governing board, serious on that.
Yep.
So you don't anticipate any problem with getting the grant?
Yes, we do.
You expect there's gonna be some trouble?
Sure, because you just don't know.
It's very competitive, and it's a new grant, but this is the first year, so we don't really know.
So will all the $9,000 if the grant is?
We all, yes. Yep, that's one of those that you roll, but we could not have done, admitted this position without having him be able to.
And we can apply again, if we don't get.
And that's what happened with the, with the PEP grant. We didn't get it the first time, but then we applied the second time and got it, but we had a lot of the lift on. One of the things that might be a little bit of an asterisk here is that when these grants come up, when the federal government said, "Hey, state of Wisconsin, you have this many million dollars for charter schools," they said, one of the things they said is they're looking at high school specific need. But that doesn't mean that's what it has to be, it's just there was some language of some things that they are looking for. But I feel the partnerships with the Trafford Center, other ones that you're looking at, the support of the board, the personnel that we have, and just reading through this, talking with Kevin, I am sure we are going to have T's and I's dotted across, and it's gonna be a pretty comprehensive grant that I, I feel, I feel that if we don't get it, we'll be comfortable the next time we apply. But I feel that we're, I feel that the team, that you guys have been working on this and with Kevin, that I feel very confident.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Alright, so if you want, we'll probably take both of them. So we'll take, take one first for the discuss and consider establishment of the Trafford Way Academy Charter Schools School District, North Final Act.
Alright, so you've heard the presentation, and so I guess we look for board action then to consider the establishment of the Trafford Way Academy Charter School for the district. Alright, so motion and seconded. Any further questions or any further discussion? Hearing on, a roll call vote then, Chris.
Will. Chisholm.
Yes.
Hock. Yes.
Streeter.
Yes.
Motion carries. And then item number two, discuss and consider the support of the Board of Education for the submission of the proposal for the charter school grant with the Department of Destruction, the chairman of which we talked earlier, CCA 6, or?
Yep.
I'll make that motion though.
And I'll second that. Any other questions about that? Alright, hearing on, roll call vote please.
Chisholm.
Yes.
Hock.
Yes.
Streeter.
Yes.
Will.
Yes.
Alright, motion carries.
And I want to thank these ladies and your team, you've done a great job working. Debbie, thank you very much, had a positive presupposition. Chris, thank you so much for your support and how you're gonna help them all. Do you know of any charter school that is like this in the whole country?
Not quite, there's some that are close that we're hoping to visit and just draw some ideas from. But no, there's some great models in Australia that we're looking at.
A good day made.
Definitely not in Australia.
I think we'll have some similar competition though, if we had looked at, where was that school?
Yeah, but they don't have Dr. Daryl Trafford. And if you guys have never met him, he's just a very kind man, he's unbelievable. Alright, if you guys want to stay for all the festivities, I guess you're more than welcome to partake in the rest of your evening.
No, no, I wanted to be safe, I wanted to be safe, so that's fine.
Thank you.
Alright.
Alright, next on the agenda is discuss and consider adding May 14th board meeting for personal aid, including educator contracts and budget compensation increases for the 18th annual school year. We often do this, we put this extra early.
Right, we have May 15th as the due date. We used to try to get everything done in April, it just has worked, it's been really good. And I would ask that we consider doing that again.
I think that's a good idea, and I'll make that motion. Alright, motion and seconded.
Hock.
Yes.
Streeter.
Yes.
Will.
Yes.
Chisholm.
Yes. Just as a point of order, Mr. Clark, what was the date of the meeting that you had said?
Either by March?
21st, I think, the third Monday. I meant the 19th. Yeah, I said the 21st just to see some back check. That's gonna be the 19th. It'll be the 21st two years from now.
Got it. Alright, next on the agenda, discuss and consider moving the May 28th board meeting to May 21st or potential to eliminate it since the 28th is a holiday.
Yeah, and I didn't mean to put that in there, let's get rid of it, because there's Memorial Day. But if we met the Monday before, what's gonna be a week? The only thing I see from a, we'd have very few checks, because we'd only have like, well, we'd have three, well, we'd have two weeks, and then in June, we'd have six weeks to seven weeks. So, that's the only thing. There could be some, like, hey, let's get together, because we have retirements or hirings, but we could do that in a, you know, 15, 20-minute thing. So it just, I don't know if we would need that, since last year, Memorial Day was, was the fifth Monday, so we had that Monday and then two weeks and then another one. So I just, I really don't, I love meetings, and I love getting together with everybody, but if there was some sense of you guys not wanting to do that, and you're okay with having a larger, or, no, a lot larger there, but having, it's a big thing, it's the money and budget, and Maria's team would just have a lot more put forward on.
Well, we would, we would send out what we need to send out.
Right.
So, you know.
It'd just be different.
It would just, they go out before the board meeting.
It would just make the whole thing for me on May 14th. And add to the extra on the 21st.
I would agree.
Okay.
But we can all, we can always have a special day.
Right.
And especially in June, with this construction stuff for decisions or things that have to be updates, whatever, we could always throw a special meeting in somewhere in June sometime.
How many years, I think it's almost been five straight, that we had a special meeting in June for retirement or for resignation than a hire? And like Greg had said, we're gonna have another group coming up of information, so I think the flexibility.
Right.
Yeah, I'm way cool, so then what the motion would be is to eliminate the May 28th board meeting. Is what it would be.
Alright, so then I'll look for board action then for, do you want to eliminate the May 28th meeting or move it to the May 14th?
Nope, we already said there's a 14th, so now we just eliminate. Well, I could have done that.
Well, the agenda, when you prepare the agenda, you can do whatever you want to make it.
Well, you're right, I could have had one agenda item, but I didn't know if we wanted to, so.
So I will entertain a motion to remove the May 28th meeting from the calendar for this year. So. Motion and seconded.
And then I just, well, Mike's starting to be here for that one, but that's cool. But whoever of steam and whoever the new one of it is, Sean can thank you for that. So make sure that won't be found. Absolutely. Alright, Streeter.
Yes.
Will. Chisholm.
Yes.
Hock.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number five, discuss and consider extrudery contracts for Linda Wazidelik for mentor and assistant for seventh grade volleyball, Mariah Disterhoff for seventh grade volleyball, and Ryan Lyle for assistant baseball coach.
Alright, so Linda, so Mariah Disterhoff is a senior. And we didn't have anybody that wanted to coach volleyball in seventh grade, but she said she was willing to, and Samantha and Matt talked with her, and Matt was very confident she could do it with some help. Linda had volunteered, so they've split that amount. So Linda gets, I think it's a quarter of it, and then Mariah gets a third, a two-third, or three-fourths of it. So that's worked out very well, and I'm very proud and happy for Linda for doing that, and Mariah's getting some great experience. And then Ryan Lyle, we don't know if we're gonna have JB or if we're gonna have just varsity for baseball, so it'd be assistant baseball coach, and then when that time comes, Coach Barry and Joe will figure out exactly what we'll have.
Alright, I'll take those all together then, I'll look for a motion to approve those three extrudery contracts.
We'll make that motion.
Alright, any other questions? Hearing on, roll call vote please.
Will.
Yes.
Chisholm.
Yes.
Hock.
Yes.
Streeter.
Yes.
Alright, motion carries. Item number six, discuss and consider Christine Schultz as director of student services.
Before we get to that, just a little bit longer. We do have open middle school track, one high school track, and varsity volleyball. So there is new rules that the board can also coach. I know that used to run in the high school, maybe, unless, so if anybody's looking to maybe, within a couple weeks, I think, yeah, so, just a heads up. If anybody's interested, it's a middle school track, it's kind of like breeding cats, I believe, but a fun type. Would you agree? You guys have seen that, yeah? So, but just to want to throw that out there, so, just a little plug, and if you know of anybody interested in the community, let us know. Alright, and now.
And now, discuss and consider Christine Schultz as director of student services.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chisholm, very, very proud, excited that Chris came here, she goes by Chris. So, I'm gonna let her introduce herself to you. But just to give you a little bit of the background, I want to thank Debbie for her 13 years of service in North Final Act and 78 years of service to the kids, or, just kidding. Forty kids, or forty years, you've been here for a long time. Forty years. So when Debbie was so kind enough to let us know her intentions in November, allowed us to post, we had a pool of 10 people that were qualified for the position, we interviewed four. Of those four that we interviewed, three of them had substantial experience. One of them who didn't have experience had a lot of talent. We had, Steve was on the interview panel in here, and then we also had Adam did a writing sample, Mike did a tour, and then they all met with me. And we, we interviewed four people, after those four, we narrowed it down to two, talked to both of those two people, and when it was all said and done on that one Friday afternoon, we were very certain of the person that we wanted to recommend to the board to hire. So at this time, I'm very excited that my recommendation is, is that we would have Christine Schultz, who's currently the, she's a special education teacher and she's a director of pupil services in Green Lake, to, to take a position that's gonna be a little bit different than what Debbie has right now in what that position we call student services. So inherently, what it does is deal with all early childhood and all special education, and not only just special education, because our special education teachers are also serving regular education in some way, helping serve the whole process, early childhood through 12th grade. So with that, I'll give it, Steve, if you want to make any comments about the interview process, since you're sitting on it, and then what we'll do is we'll have Chris introduce herself.
Do you want me to go first?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, it was another great experience, I've done a lot of interview panels and stuff over the years, and it was nice to know, starting first of all, that with the first interview, that was the only night we were gonna have to interview, because we already had one candidate I felt could do it, and they just kind of kept getting better. And I, we, our group saw Chris last, and she just rose right, right to the top. I mentioned in close session, I don't want to embarrass you with that, but I was impressed not only with the stuff you look for for an administrator and professionalism and presence and stuff like that, but you had a way of bringing in your sense of humor appropriately, and it was just, just an enjoyable time, that 45 minutes. And sometimes you worry about, we only have 45 minutes for the person to decide about some life-changing events for that person or for the school district and those you affect. But I think, I was very impressed then, I'm looking forward to great things from you.
Alright, and at this time, I'd like to introduce, Chris, and if you tell a little bit about your background and what brought you to apply to North Final Act.
Absolutely, so I grew up in Green Bay, so I'm a Apple fan.
Take all your bears, purple and alien with you.
So I grew up in Green Bay, I lived in Sandy, Ohio, and Milwaukee. As a director of music, and I worked with people ages three to 99. I taught them how to read music, how to play music, all kinds of stuff. And I moved to Green Lake and been teaching special ed for 14 years and served as an administrator for the war. So I'm absolutely honored and excited about this opportunity. Thank you for believing in me.
Alright, that's pretty cool.
So you're going from a 200% position down to a 100% position.
I am very excited just to have my admin hat on all the time, through that lens. But I think the teaching experience will help me a lot, because I've taught at all levels, and I also taught regular ed as well, so. And I'm satisfied, parent, on the other side of the IEP table, because I have a son with a disability. We're almost up to the next one. A1 disabilities, so we're almost empty now for his son. I'm ready to give myself to this position.
And one of the things, as I listened to Chris and talked with her, she offers something, we have a very strong administrative team, but one thing that came to very, for me to understand, she offers something we don't have. And it's, I think, what we, what she's gonna bring is a different perspective, as you had said about that, she's very calming, but also I think, I think one of the things that was very interesting is one of her references called her a velvet hammer, if you will, somebody who can make and get things done but can do it with grace and can help us go through some things, and I think that's something that will benefit, we have a lot of good decision makers, but I think she'll, she'll add strength to us also.
I put a little sugar in what the narrative is.
All right, any other comments?
All right. All right, so it's board's pleasure on approving Christine Schultz as your director of student services.
I await motion to approve Christine Schultz as director of student services.
Second, a couple, like, for all. All right, any other questions? Seeing none?
Streeter?
Yes.
Will?
Yes.
Chisholm?
Yes.
Hock?
Yes.
Motion carries. Roll call vote.
All right.
Number seven, discuss and consider educator.
Well, before you leave, I have letters, Mike Reese. Mike Reese is officially retiring, he's got a letter for each one of you, got it to me on Friday, he's excited, we will be posting that soon. Thirty-eight years in the school district of North Fond du Lac, and he has a lot of pride. Matter of fact, he'll stick around all summer to make sure that banner continues to thrive. So he's excited. One thing too, is we have, with him retiring, there might be another one coming up, but we're not too sure on that one yet. I'm about 99.8% sure, and so is that staff member, but we just have to wait. So, but, so I have Mike Reese as the one, and really excited for him, and I'm gonna figure out some cool stuff to do as he goes through the final years of this time here, final months.
All right.
And I'll second that and add with Brett's, I often thought, when I watched the concerts in the auditorium, that every single kid that went through this school system for the last 35-plus years, he taught them how to play an instrument.
How about that?
It's just the amount of lives that the gentleman has touched in music. It's just, it's a state. So, I'm, daddy's retiring with good health, and I have good things to do, so.
Any other questions or comments?
Hock?
Yes.
Streeter?
Yes.
Will?
Yes.
Chisholm?
Yes.
All right, down to the last two. Discuss and consider resolution awarding the sale of $9,999,000 in general obligation school improvement bonds.
Exciting time. I am gonna turn this one over to Mike Clark, our trusted friend from Barrett, who I mentioned earlier, a conversation when we looked at financially where we would be and what we should be doing to best benefit the district. Working with Maria, this is the final, we did this in June of last year, if you remember correctly, and so this is going to be for the remainder of the 2.95 million, or 29.5 million dollars.
Good evening. So this, this will complete the borrowings toward the projects, and if you, like way back beginning, the idea of splitting into two borrowings was to manage the tax impact as well as give the district more time to spend dollars because there's some IRS limitations. Not that they're hard stops as far as the spending, but the, you have to file some reports, and if you have any excess interest earnings, you have to pay that to the IRS, things like that. So those were the two main goals for splitting the borrowings. So if you open up to the first page, we took bids this morning, we received five bids. Jany McDowry Scott was the winning bidder at 3.3798%. The other bids were fairly close. We're happy to see five bids. January is very choppy in the market, the tax law changes, things really kind of had things all over the place, so we're very happy with, with the number of bids. The next page describes the issue, general obligation school improvement bonds, 9.995 billion. Settlement date will be April 4th, this will be the date the district receives the funds. The first interest will be April 1, 2019, because you'll be lending for those as small as correct in the dollars, maybe in January, February timeframe. Moody's affirmed the district's A1 rating, rating report is attached, has some very good things to say about the district echoing some of the things your auditor said about solid financial operations, solid finances overall. Obviously, you're a relatively small district, because when they compare districts, they compare nationwide, not just within Wisconsin. Your debt level's a little elevated now, but I just came from upon, had the same conversation with them, they have the same rating. And the debt level's somewhat elevated, but whenever you pass through a firm like this, that's common. The winning bidder did purchase bond insurance for the district, so we had you qualified for bond insurance, so was, the people that bid on these, your bonds don't hold them themselves, they don't want to anyway, they want to resell them, so my guess is they had a buyer, investor who wanted, they wanted bond insurance on it. The bond insurance would kick in if the district for some reason was unable to make its set plans. So it's a cost to the transaction, they elected to spend the money on that to reflect the interest rate, but they still had the lowest interest rate, so a good result for them, a good result for you. Again, the interest rate, after we restructured a little bit, once we talked with them, the borrowing rate was 3.3819%. If you go to the next page, it shows the two phases of borrowing. You see the interest rate on the first phase is lower, but keep in mind that there's more shorter-term bonds, kind of like a 15-year mortgage, 30-year mortgage, rates higher on the longer term, the average life of this issue is longer, so it makes sense that the interest rate is higher. But you'll see that when you look at the second issue, the one we're talking about tonight, we picked up an extra year, so the repayments over 21 years, bond issues in Wisconsin are only 20 years, but by, by dating it in April, you pick up an extra year of repayment, helps spreading out that tax impact. As a whole, very good result. If you look to the far right-hand side, you'll see that the tax rate will be dropping about 37 cents in 1920. The district will have a couple options at that point. If the governor signs the low revenue ceiling, that drop may come in handy to offset the potential tax increase of, if you utilize those dollars. And if you still have the ability to keep your levy up, you can always pre-fund some of your future payments, I know the district's done deficits in the past, so that's another option, but it's likely the low revenue ceiling will be signed, and having that drop will help offset the cost of that tax impact in that may be out of that year.
All right, state that, so this is a pretty big deal that we weren't counting on because of what we have here. So after, in 1920, we have 1819, which is, we're gonna go through, so our, our taxes will be relatively similar depending on increase in students, it won't increase because of the debt, it'll increase because of our, our FT, if you will, our students. And that's why we had to increase more this year because we have increased students, which we can leverage more. But then you said in 1920, that will drop?
From the debt, the debt portion?
Correct.
Drop about 37 cents.
So the 37, so our mill rate will go down 37 cents for the debt, and then with that governor's, like Mike had said, right now, $9,400, we're about, what, 94, 37?
We're very close.
Okay, so even if that passes, we won't take, be able to take advantage of increasing our revenue ceiling?
In 1919.
But we could in, in 1920.
Correct.
And that's what Mike's talking about, which would get us more revenue to help pay for Fund 10 stuff.
Correct, and so that's, having that drop, there may be advantageous at that time. Or you can start pre-funding the debt through deficits and managing that levy.
And possibly, depending on growth, creating a gap or a cushion that if we have to go on to another referendum in five years, the operational, another capital becomes increased. There's a lot of things that we'll have to be very smart about.
Yeah, and so as a whole, the overall financing costs, millions of dollars less than what you're gonna give a time refer, a very good result. Now, I think, any questions?
I want to thank Mike and Barrett and his work, I mean, we've worked with, since what I've been able to be here for nine years so far, in this position, and we've worked with, I've worked with you pretty much the whole time, and I'll tell you, the, the planning and what we've gotten, working with Wendy beforehand, but I think we've got more aggressive and utilized more assets with Maria. It's, I want to thank you, Mike, for your leadership, your vision, and giving us the ideas, and also supporting us because it's been, it's been pretty cool. Appreciate that.
It's been enjoyable. It's, as you tell, Aaron's got a positive energy, and it's great to work in those situations.
Do you work with any districts that don't manage to score the A1 rating?
Well, that is a good question. Actually, I'll break the ratings down, there's AAA, and there are five AAA districts in the state. That's your Mequans, your Middletons, your Elmbrooks, Hockdy, Wawa Tosa, who's a client of mine, they may be AAA too, but they have no debt, so it's not my favorite client. But they're working on it, they're going to refer, maybe this year.
We'll talk to Dr. Phil soon.
Yeah, so, so that's, but those are like, eight billion dollars valuation, Wawa Tosa has eight billion dollars in valuation and 45% fund balance. Those are the, those are, those are the things that, and there's a long history of that back when it split off from the city of Tosa, so, but it, there's, and then there's, there's the double A level. That's your Green Bays, your Appletons, districts where higher tax base, that's one thing you can't control. I mean, if you look in the report, it talks about one of the things that make your, you know, in the report, I should say, oh, material tax base expansion. The school district doesn't have a lot of control of that. You know, so, and then, so there's the AAA, there's three levels within the AAA, and then there's the single A, and then A1 is the top of that range. So to get to the double A level, double A3, you know, maybe if you had your fund balance up to 35, 40%, your tax base, which, you know, is not gonna happen. And I always tell people, you don't want to make your educational decisions solely based on your credit rating. If you, if you had no rating, you'd be able to sell bonds. You know, bond insurance is there. So, you know, the other things, the socioeconomic factors, tax base, you have no control over those. So we're happy with the, the A1, and it's just not realistic, given the constraints for you to really get beyond that. And again, great rates, bond insurance has come back after the financial crisis, about most of those bond insurers were out of business, it's kind of coming back now, the cost has come down on it. So you'll always be able to issue debt at good levels, you know, if you do happen to get the double A level at some point, that'd be great. But, you know, I've worked with the district 15, 17 years, you don't issue a lot of debt. It's different if you were like the county, or even some of the larger municipalities, where you're doing annual issues, but the tech colleges, they always seem to be issuing debt. Then the rating maybe has a little bit more importance, but when you're issuing debt once every five to 10, plus years, you know, A1's a very good rate, and I feel good about that. I wouldn't, I wouldn't focus on getting to 35, 40% fund balance, if the cost of, you know, things you're not doing for debts.
Out of curiosity sake, if we had been, with this particular issue, if we had been rated double A, what effect would that have had on the interest rate?
Yeah, I was not quite confident answering that question before the tax law changes in the market. The market, just, like I said, just in the last few weeks, has really kind of settled down, but typically, it's about a quarter percent, 20. You know, but, but even there, it varies, because if you're a school district in Dane County, you get a little bump just for being in Dane County. You have Madison, you have the state, for operations, you have the tax, and the values are very high. So there's other factors, but I would say 20 basis points, maybe up to a quarter percent on a good day, but there might be other times that the market's really, the supply's really limited, like, you know, it could be as little as 10 basis points. But again, the net result is millions less than was projected with the time.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're, this is cool stuff. Then what the, the need is being? Nothing. One of the best things I see about this is not only are we investing in things for the next couple generations, in high quality, that'll work, we've also kept up and added staff, will continue to add staff and create services that will make our community better, and we're able to do that within the means and actually add a better rate of taxation than what we had previously said in the community. All right, questions? One thing is after we pass this, there's a ton of paperwork to sign, Vicki being out could change some things, so.
You can go out to, yeah, you know when she may be available?
I don't, but I mean, I can, I'll call her, I'll call her tomorrow.
Okay.
Because she's in South Carolina, I'll call her right away and find out.
And we'll circle back. Some of the documents may have to be adjusted for someone else to sign, if she's gonna be back sometime, or maybe sooner this week.
I'm sure it's this week.
That'd probably be accommodated, but we just need to make sure.
All right.
But there's, I think, I think it'll be five days.
I think it's five days.
Five days to get the signature soon?
Yeah.
Okay. So what I'll do then is, is we make this motion, it's based on Mike's recommendation to, for the bond sale to be to the company that he had mentioned, and then we'll just, I'm sure Vicki will be back this week, and if not, I'll know that by tomorrow, then we can scramble and figure it out.
He thinks so. This is his first time, we'll adjust, so.
Not your first rodeo, if you.
No, no, it's 17 and 18 years.
All right, so any other questions from the board? If not, then I'll entertain a motion to award the sale of $99,995,000 in general obligation school improvement bonds for the recommendation of Barrett.
So.
Sorry.
All right.
All right, Chisholm?
Yes.
Hock?
Yes.
Streeter?
Yes.
Will?
Yes.
Thanks, Mike.
Take care.
Yeah, yeah.
And last on the agenda, consider, discuss and consider awarding contracts to subcontractors for the capital improvements project, as was discussed earlier.
All right, so just to, yeah, so just give a really quick overview to everybody else. Three things that we looked at when C.D. Smith looked at all the bonds, or, not the bonds, sorry, you got bonds on my mind, all the subcontractors is number one, quality of company, and when we look at quality is how good work they do, the reputation, how well they work with C.D. Smith, another, and how timely they can get the things done. Another one is local, are they from this area, have they supported, do we have a good relationship with them already, how does that work? Do we have employees that live in our district that work there? We want to keep that in consideration, as long as the first one is also important. Third one is price. Not only price being a low price, but is it accurate and what quality we get for that price? So as we went through, I'm proud to, I will read the names of all the different companies quickly, and then we'll make a list, and then what I'll ask is then have a motion based on the list that I've read and what was discussed in closed session, knowing that we're gonna have another list coming up in a couple of weeks with some more of the ancillary bids, flooring, things that are in this time pressing. So for pre-cast structural concrete and arc, pre-cast concrete, Spancrete out of Alders, for selective demolition concrete, site concrete, those are all C.D. Smith's construction from Fond du Lac. And for the record, C.D. Smith got me their bids for these different items before the rest came in, so it's very transparent, and that information was already had. Pre-cast plank, the Spancrete of Green Bay, masonry, C.D. Smith Construction Fond du Lac, steel, Menosky Welding of Fond du Lac, roofing, WNL Roofing of Stockbridge, waterproofing, Charity Brothers of Grafton, pre-molded membrane, that's Charity Brothers from Grafton, that's interesting, that's the rubber that's underneath the cement that's underneath the flooring in the new gym, so that will always be good. Vapor Barrier, and that's from Prefomers Green Bay. Vapor Barrier, and that's from Pre-Fomers Green Bay. Each, the doors, frames, wood doors and hardware, Block Iron and Supply Company of Oshkosh, Coil Door Midwest from Fond du Lac, aluminum entrances and glass and glazing, Omni Glass of Oshkosh, gypsum board systems and cold formed metal framing, Verhalen of Green Bay, elevator, Schindler Elevator Corporation, Menominee Falls, fire suppression, J&amp;H Ahern of Fond du Lac, plumbing, Ahern Gross Plumbing of Fond du Lac, HVAC, JF Ahern of Fond du Lac, electrical, K&amp;W or KW Electric Plymouth, earthwork and site utilities, Baumhart Sand and Gravel of Eden, landscaping, Stewart's of Fond du Lac, asphalt paving, Northeast Asphalt of Fond du Lac, fencing, Northway Fence of Menominee Falls, and synthetic turf system, that's going to be in all of the two different courtyards, and that's with Schmidt Athletic Floors in Waukesha. So I would put forward to the board to consider that list of subcontractors to be awarded contracts to be working with C.D. Smith on the friendship project.
All right, moving seconded, any further questions or discussion?
We got a call?
Seeing none?
All right.
Vote for the vote.
Hock?
Yes.
Streeter?
Yes.
Will?
Chisholm?
Yes.
All right, motion carries, and we are suspended.
Amen. Really excited about that. We have, I mean, we have some really good partners that have been here, alumni, people working in the community, it's going to be cool.
Like I mentioned earlier, two, some longtime, well-known, well-respected integrity, whatever companies, two involved that, who are interested in our job, which is pretty cool.
Yep, amen.
All right, that brings us to the conclusion of the published agenda, so therefore I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion to adjourn.
I'll second it. Where's no discussion?
And what time we've got? All right, we will go with Hock.
Yes.
Streeter?
Yes.
Will?
Yes.
Chisholm?
Yes.
All right.
And we are adjourned. Thank you.